Okay, just calling the planning commission for the Wednesday, March 15th at 6:30. Calling the meeting into session. So, have a roll call vote?
Don't we need to do this?
Hold on, where's my office?
Where's my office?
He was right there.
He jinxed us.
I don't have the words.
The excitement begins.
Yeah. Sorry, didn't realize you weren't ready.
Commissioner Hosky. Commissioner Azar.
Here.
Commissioner Baker. Vice Chair Scholter.
Here.
Commissioner Brazen.
Here.
Commissioner Akers.
Here.
And Councilman Pollocka.
Here.
Motion to excuse.
Oh, a motion to use.
Hagforce.
Forson and Foster.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, I'm making a motion to excuse Hagforce and Foster.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Brazen and a report from Commissioner. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any opposed? Moving on to the approval of the agenda.
Do we approve the agenda for the...
Second.
Everyone check and make sure your mics aren't... It wasn't on.
There's usually a little red or yellow green button.
I move that we approve the minutes for the March 15th, 2023 planning commission meeting. I'm sorry, agenda, approve the agenda.
Second, by Brazen.
Motion by Commissioner Baker and a second by Commissioner Brazen. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? Okay. Next, the approval of the minutes from the last meeting, from the February 1st, 2023 planning commission meeting. And do we have a motion?
I move to accept the meeting minutes from the February 1st, 2023 planning commission meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Pollocka and a second from Commissioner Brazen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Well, it's time for the call to audience. This is time for anyone in the audience to address the planning commission on any topic not on today's agenda. If anyone in the audience is here to speak on an issue not on the agenda, this is your time to do so. Please approach the podium, state your name for the record, and direct your comments to the planning commission. You'll have three minutes. So, opening the, opening the call to the audience at 6:35 PM.
Through the chair, just a correction, they should state their name and address.
Name and address.
For the record. Thank you.
Not seeing anyone. Closing the call to the audience at 6:35 PM. Okay, right now, I'm going to recuse myself for the rest of the meeting. And is there a motion to nominate a temporary chair for the rest of the evening?
Sorry, through the chair, did you want to mention why you're recusing?
I'm recusing myself from the meeting because my wife works for the actual firm.
I would move to nominate myself to chair the rest of the meeting.
Second.
Oh, that would be Baker.
We have a motion by Commissioner Baker and a second by Commissioner Brazen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there you go.
On the board.
Good meeting, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Hey, Matt. All right, before we move on to item number five, our public hearing, this is our only item on tonight's agenda. It's the consideration of the rezoning, planned unit development, and site plan review applications for 700 to 800 Woodward Heights, which is a project called The Edge, a mixed use development. I want to acknowledge, I have a professional relationship with the applicant. It is not one in which I or my nonprofit receive any compensation. The opposite, we've discussed providing loans for middle income and affordable buyers for some of their homes. So, it's not a partnership that I feel that is at conflict, but wanted to make sure that I disclosed that and shared it with the commission. So, we will move on to item number 5A. As I said before, consideration of the rezoning, planned unit development, site plan review applications for 700 to 800 Woodward Heights, The Edge, mixed use development. This begins with a public hearing. Well, this begins, I guess, with an introduction from our city staff who isn't here yet. So, is it you or is it Roger? Okay, so we'll wait for just a moment for our community economic development director. We'll open with a presentation from our city staff, then we'll have the applicants come up with their presentation before we open the public hearing. So, we'll just wait for Roger.
Do we know where he went?
Oh, okay. He's right here. I know our city attorney is here as well tonight, but I don't know if he's sitting at the dais. Oh, no, I see his name checked, okay, he'll be down. Kyle, would you let them know that we're ready when they are? Thank you. I realized I would break quorum if I did it. Off the phone, I turned off the phone. Oh, what a day. Where's Deena? I'm not that person.
Yeah, I'm like this pedestrian walking.
I knew like.
Does every day.
Play out much better.
Sure.
Councilmember? Thought I was just taking a quick recess until our staff comes in so we can pause the recording.
Sure. Yep.
Great. What time is it? I can't see that. All right, the planning commission will take a brief recess at 6:39, just so we can pause the recording and not talk into microphones. If you would ask councilmember? Thank you. We're just about to come back from recess. Good timing. Do we have the nameplate for Commissioner Hagforce?
Yeah, it's on the side, Destin.
Oh, thank you.
I have to place myself.
Geez.
All right, the planning commission will come back from our recess. It is 6:42. We have welcomed during our recess Commissioner Hagforce, who was recently, or who was previously excused. So, Commissioner Hagforce has joined us, as well as city attorney Dan Christ at the dais and CED director Roger Caruso. So, before we open the public hearing, item number 5A, we will begin with an introduction from our city staff, then we will hear from our applicants, and then we will open the public hearing.
Evening, commission. As Chair Baker mentioned, this is an item called The Edge. The Edge is located just east of the railroad tracks, south of Woodward Heights. We refer to the front building, if you recall, as the Ice House. The applicant is proposing 100 residential units situated towards the southwest of the site, southwest corner. If I can highlight this, to include a maker's space that they'll discuss more. Staff has a limited presentation. We presented this a couple of months back. Overall, I think the applicant has made some very good improvements that the planning commission will hopefully see. I think the applicant has a pretty well detailed presentation that will hit on most items, and staff can then get up and speak at that time. We invited the city attorney. This is a little bit of a complicated case with the rezoning and PUD, so the city attorney is available to answer any questions. With that, I will introduce Tim. Tim, who's going to give a little bit of a presentation.
Hello again.
Welcome.
Sorry for the delay. Tim Lockman, Robertson Brothers Home, 6905 Telegraph Road. Good to see you all again. Thank you to staff for introduction. You know, we'd like to present tonight, I know you have seen this several times in different iterations. We think that the plan has been substantially improved since the last time you've seen it. We have a lot of people from the public that do want to speak on behalf of the project tonight, so we want to move forward. We do understand there's some concern that popped up today that we want to, you know, obviously discuss, but we're willing to table it to handle those concerns, which could involve a conditional rezoning request. We'd like to move forward, but we do want to put that on the table. But again, we'd like the opportunity to at least present and have the neighborhood speak, so.
Yeah, I think, Tim, if you are, if you'd like to share your presentation, and then we'll open the public hearing, and then we can discuss what the next steps are? Does that make sense?
Sure. Thank you. So, I'll start, and then I'll have Ted Creer from Land Design Studio kind of go through some of the, some of the fluff.
Thank you.
So, the site itself is on Woodward Heights, Woodward Heights Boulevard, obviously where the railroad is. I think we're all familiar with the location. It's in an industrial sub-district. It's really on the edge of that industrial district, hence the name of the project, The Edge. So, we really see this as a very unique site, an opportunity to save a building that has had decades of neglect. You know, the site itself, again, as I mentioned, is on the edge of the industrial district. The net loss to your overall industrial is less than 2%. So, we're not talking about a huge development here that's, you know, gobbling up a lot of industrial, really at the corner of where the industrial district is. We've had multiple neighborhood meetings over the last year and a half, two years. I think we've had three of them, usually pretty sparsely attended, mostly positive feedback. And what we did here from some of the neighbors to our east, I think we've been able to handle in some of the site plan amendments. So, getting into it a little bit, the existing site conditions, I think everybody's familiar with Drifter Coffee on the corner, the Ice House building, that's really kind of the showpiece of the, of the project. And then there's a number of industrial buildings that have long outlived their life. And I think some of you had seen that when we offered a tour of that recently. So, I think it gives a really good example of what we're dealing with on the site and why we chose to design it the way we did. This was that tour that I was talking about. Opened it up. Anybody that's been in that Ice House building knows how special it is. It's a beautiful product, beautiful property. You never know it by looking from the outside. You walk in and you're just amazed. It's, you know, I don't know how many feet tall it is, but just lined with wood back from the 30s, I mean, a long time ago, obviously. And everything is restored, beautiful building. It just screams for reuse, and that's, that's exactly what our plan is. Some shots of those that date. It's the building. And, you know, from the outside, you know, it looks like it's from the Soviet era. But, you know, we've really tried to reimagine this and make it something that's very special and unique and incorporated into the plan that we're going to show you. And again, the inside is really what's special about the site. Some of the other buildings are not useful. They've long since passed their, their useful life. These are some of the examples of that. It's just not in good shape. It's just not something that, you know, should be still operable, and it has not been for, for many years now. Some more pictures of, this is most of the building to the south, on the south side of the site. So, we looked at your master plan, and in fact, you've really encouraged this type of development. This is, this is one of the reasons we decided to look at this in the, in the very first place. In fact, our project is actually referenced in, in the master plan. So, it does focus on the edges of industrial, focuses on residential type of, of mixed use, which is exactly what, what we have focused on. Talks about adaptive reuse, exactly what we're proposing. Drifter's already there, obviously, and then the Ice House building is something that is a, is a huge component of the project. This is the area where in your master plan that talks specifically about, about the edge of mixed use development and just providing those amenities for residents. And again, it does provide amenities for the residents. Will be a, you know, I think, a spot for people in the neighborhood to use and to be proud of and really have that public space that we're providing along the frontage. And in fact, you know, we really haven't heard anything negative from, from the neighborhood whatsoever. In fact, most of it has been, everything we've heard has been positive. This really goes into some of your stormwater resource discussions in the master plan. It's important to you. Obviously, Ferndale's been built for so long, predates all of the most current requirements for stormwater. We will be bringing the site up to your standards and then some, because we're adding quite a bit of bioswales, rain gardens. In fact, we're going to be saving over 3,000 gallons of water on a rain event within a 48-hour period that would otherwise go into your, your storm system. That's above and beyond what we're detaining on site. So, you know, we're not just saying we're going to meet your code, we're saying we're going to go above it. And that also creates some very unique open space opportunities. So, those are things that are new from the last time we spoke to, so we wanted to kind of point that out, you know, just going above and beyond with the project. This is the site plan, so as you can see, on the north side of it, that's that Ice House, that's the building, obviously, I'm talking about. And then we're proposing apartments on the south side. All of this would be connected. We're really focusing on the connection in between. So, we've got the connectivity. We're, you can see where the metal pergola is in the center. That's reusing some of the materials that are on site to create really kind of an interesting and functional connection between. You can see, and Ted's going to go into detail on all of this, but when you see it kind of collectively, I think it shows just how this is integrated into a mixed use project. You've got Drifter there on the northeast corner of the site. That'll be, that'll remain the same. We are proposing some improvements to the driveway that's there, creating what we call a woo-nurf. Again, we've been trying to build woo-nurf in Ferndale for quite some time. Tried it on the Parkdale site, didn't work out.
You just like to say it.
I like to say it. I really do. I really do. And part of that, and of course Ted will show you, we also want to create an artist alley, really to show that this is a unique location. Drifter's great. There's a lot of pedestrian activity there. We're playing off that with what we're calling a front porch, which is really kind of functioning the same as it is today, if you will, but we're, we're making it, you know, just, just more obvious that this is an area that people gather. And, and, you know, there could be food trucks. We're proposing bollards, so the food trucks can only go there. You know, it's not like traffic can go up there. It's only for food trucks and that sort of thing and events. And then a front yard, which is in front of the Ice House, which is, which is a public space. It's being used as public space right now, but we're going to overtly call that out as public space, which I think is, you know, there's not much in this area. So, that's, that's a real plus, I think, for the neighborhood. On the south side of the Ice House, there's a patio, and, you know, that's going to be more for, for gathering space. We see a lot of events and that sort of thing. And it's all really conducive for, for combining that with the apartments to the south. And you can see we've added in what we call maker space, which is kind of a, an attempt to bring that even closer. It's, it's, you know, it's a horizontal mixed use, but we're bringing space into where the residential is, because we think that that's a very unique kind of space as well. So, we're happy to talk about that as, as well when we get to the questions. I'm not going to go through all of these, but these are your PUD requirements. And again, it's, we don't have to meet all 12, but I think we're meeting quite a bit of them. We don't meet all of them. I don't think, I don't think there is a site that can meet all of them just because of the specifics of all the individuals. So, again, I don't want to go through all these, but I want to make it clear that we're not saying that we're hitting every single one of your PD, PUD standards or your PUD benefits. But the ones we are, we're really, I think, hitting it, I think, out of the park. So, obviously, there's no natural features. We certainly have a mixture of uses, obviously, from Ice House to the Drifter, to the apartments, to the maker space. That's all on one site, so it's about as mixed use as it can get there. Sustainable building and site design, we're going above and beyond with the stormwater. That's something I know that's important to the city, it's important to us. And that'll, just bringing it to the requirement for the underground detention will have a huge impact, because there's nothing out there right now. So, just doing the minimum will really increase the stormwater improvements in the area, not to mention the, the additional bioswale and rain gardens that, that will add to that. Open space greenways, there's really nothing to connect to per se, although there is obviously a bike path in the multimodal network, so we're going to be connecting to that. I wouldn't say we're really transitioning from adjacent land uses. We don't really have anything to transition to. Of course, you've got the industrial, but then we have the railroad as well, so it's not like we butt up right next to a residential, single family or anything like that. Provision of affordable housing, we don't meet that. We are going to meet that. We are going to be requesting a brownfield, and there is a requirement for that. We're not proposing anything more, so we're not meeting this as far as the PUD in and of itself. Diversification of housing types, we think this is a unique building type that provides an attainable option in an area that just doesn't really have much of that right now. Obviously, we hit preservation of historical buildings with the Ice House and the Drifter building. So, that one, I think, is certainly a big component. Progress to the public street system, not necessarily applicable, but as you'll see, we have improved our site connection and vehicular maneuverability quite a bit. So, we've improved the overall traffic pattern, which will just improve Woodward Heights in general from our last plan. Pedestrian transit oriented development, you know, we've got a Mogo Bike facility within 350 feet. So, there's emphasis on pedestrian, but of course, there's also connection to bike. Coordinate development of multiple assembled, small parcels. We're creating a five-acre mixed use project, so I think we hit that quite well. And then removal of blighted buildings, of course, we have blighted buildings on, on the property, which have been already designated as that. So, you know, again, we don't hit everything, but I, I think we're, we're hitting really the, really some high level items here. I wanted to point this out. This shows existing easements. You might ask why we didn't put all the buildings up along the road. There are a lot of DTE easements that really inhibit us from doing that. You can see that. You know, we've talked to DTE quite a bit. These aren't, these aren't things that are easily moved by any stretch. So, we've kind of worked that into our, our, our design, and that's how everything has kind of guided our, our overall design of the site plan. Existing pedestrian bike connectivity, I think I'll have.
Ted, did you want to take it from?
Again, I talked about the Mogo within 350 feet. So, focusing on the pedestrian is, is critical. We've done a much better job since the last time we met you. You guys had some really good feedback on that. We took it upon ourselves to really focus on connecting pedestrians within and then connecting to, to your system throughout. We have bike rack locations throughout in many, you know, all different areas of the site, including within the apartment building as well. But you can see we're, we really focused on that from a site design aspect as well. And then EV charging, so we want to be future-proofed. We've got a number of them for the apartments. We've got barrier-free spaces as well, which frankly, we do these quite a bit, electric vehicle charging stations, but, you know, we wanted to make sure that we also included area-free locations. And then we have some up toward where the Ice House is, along Woodward Heights as well. Landscape open space, basically doubling what the requirement is. And we're doing that through the rain gardens, we're doing that through some of this active open space that we are talking about, just green space in general, much more than obviously. There's nothing existing, other than just that area in front of the Ice House building. But not only is this just open space, it's also active in many, in many respects as well. And again, lots of pedestrian connection throughout.
Take it from here?
Sure.
All right. Now I can get.
Turning over the fun stuff to me. Good evening, I'm Ted Creer. I'm a landscape architect and a land planner with Land Design Studio. And I was charged with, we do a lot of work with placemaking and sustainability, and they brought me in to say, how can we start hitting all these items that are within the master plan and bring some life to this in terms of placemaking and some of the other elements, as well as looking at the functionality of the project in terms of vehicular circulation, pedestrian circulation, and really bringing some arts and culture into the project as well. So, we've had a lot of fun with this. So, the first thing we did is we went and started looking at the old historical images. This is from 1940, when the Ice House was out there all by itself. There's really no industrial around it at the time. And we went to a historical society, I think it's in this building, actually, and got, one of my employees did, and got some a little bit of information. First and foremost, we found out it was, construction started in 1938, and it wasn't occupied until 1942. So, that was a long period of construction, according to the data we had. And it was occupied by the Detroit City Ice and Fuel Company. And they referred to it as building number 20. And we do have a graphic where we show that, probably insignificant, but we just thought that was interesting. They had a lot of properties. And then in 1974, the Ice House properties took it over, and that was the most information we had from there. I'm sure Dennis can share some of the other information as well. How does this advance, Tim? So, we found this, we went online and we looked up the Detroit Ice and Fuel Company, and we found this old advertisement from back in the day, and it had this polar bear on it. We thought, wow, that's really cool. We have this big blank facade on the west side of the property. What if we created some kind of mural? And just to, you know, pay homage to the history of this advertisement, yeah, we'll add some other fun stuff to it. So, had an artist that does work with us came up with this rendition, and we went on to refine it further, what we called out the Ice House, some other graphics on it, started illustrating how this sort of creates place. I'll talk about the front yards, the left of this image, or the front lawn of the property. And you can see the vending trucks in the background, and again, just bringing some life to that sort of, I don't know what you call that facade of what you're in Europe, but it's pretty stark looking right now. So, I think this will add a lot of, a lot of content to it. Then we went out, we looked at what we're calling the front porch, which is really Drifter Coffee's property. And this is really cool, because basically, this is built by the patrons of, of that coffee shop and for them. And there's actually, if you look at the lower left there, they won an award. And there's actually, if you look at the lower left there, they won an award for beautification in 1921. They planted gardens by themselves. They've done all kinds of improvements to it. And it's, it's a really active space. We went onto Facebook and we found, wow, not only, you know, they have the regular stuff, but they're having concerts out there, venues, they're doing plant sales, they're doing arts and crafts sales, they're doing yoga on the front yard. I mean, there's a lot of cool stuff happening here. So, you know, we want to not overly improve this. This is sort of something that's happening organically. I know Dennis is willing to talk to the owner of the coffee shop for some of the suggestions that were made by planning commissions in the past, but we want to, we really see it happening organically. But we do see some things that came up in previous meetings. One was this circle, circle drop-off. And what we're proposing to do is put two removable bollards in there so it can't be used on a regular basis. And then redo that paving that's asphalt currently and use some kind of aggregate, chip seal or something, just to improve that. But for the most part, that's really it. We just want to see it evolve as it is and become a space for the community and sort of by the community. This was the idea for the front lawn. As Tim alluded, this is really, you know, looked at as a public space. There's one image up there that we found where they actually are doing yoga out there. And what we want to do is enhance a little bit. Again, I think Tim pointed out earlier, there's all this metal that could be reclaimed from the site. So building these arches out of reclaimed metal from the site, doing gabium baskets and the corrugated metal and those kinds of things, just to sort of define the space and activate it and make it kind of cool. But this could be areas for dogs, for lawn games, for arts and crafts, food vendors, et cetera, et cetera. Again, it's sort of up to the community to decide what to do with there. And again, it's really considered public space, the road frontage. The other thing that came up that we hadn't addressed earlier was, and this is a mandate in your ordinance, is how we're going to screen the parking on Woodward Heights Road. And Dennis has actually collected all kinds of metals from various properties throughout the state of Michigan. And these rings on the lower right are these big metal rings, like washers, about four feet in diameter. So the idea was we're going to put these together and create sort of an artistic fence, integrated with a hedgerow, which is one of the ordinance requirements, evergreen edges, and just give, again, kind of bringing those arts and crafts and, and something different into it, rather than just do a wrought iron fence and your typical approach. Would have probably done the whole frontage, but he only had so many to use. So we had, we had to design it accordingly to make them go as far as we can make them go. So we have basically three sections of this, and they vary in heights and they're different thicknesses. So there'll be a lot of dimension to it that you're not seeing in here. Then the other cool thing was this idea of this artist alley. Dennis actually happens to own the building next door too, or a portion of it, maybe not the one up by Woodward Heights. And so we brought in the artist and said, give us some ideas and murals and different things we can do on the side of this. We also decided to add an arch into there. This is where we would do the woo-nurf, so it would be a shared pedestrian vehicular access on this to one way into the site off of Woodward Heights. So that's the only vehicular access going into the site. And then we have some tively lights as you enter going over it, Drifter Coffee, to add some, some, just more character and excitement to it. The illustrator we use, who's an artist who did a lot of this research, he went and got all these old vintage Ferndale photos from Woodward Avenue back in the day and started thinking of ways that those could actually be painted or implemented on the facade of that artist alley. So that was kind of cool. And then the south side of the property is what we're calling the patio. And that's a flex space, and that can be all kinds of different uses and different venues with food trucks, outdoor games, maybe music venues, things of that nature. And what we want to do, rather than just have a lot of paving, we looked at, they're, they're doing a lot of things happening now with painting the pavements with really cool graphics and whatnot. So part of the, the western side of the patio is painted from some kind of local artist. And then the east side of it would be just concrete and exposed aggregate and another kind of aggregate to give some more life to it. So just doing some different things with the pavement materials. We even toyed with some artificial turf in some of the areas as well, too. This was another idea that we had, and this kind of relates to the stormwater management sustainability. And we didn't highlight it specifically in the stormwater plans, but we noticed all this gutters coming off the roof. And I've been collecting these images over the years that you see here where artists have come in and done some really fun things to capture that water and either put it into a system. And what we're going to propose to do is actually a planting bed at the base of this that can filter and absorb some of that water before it actually goes to the overflow system. So again, just having fun with this and creating place and doing something really unique that, that you don't see typically. And the other challenge we had was some of the early iterations of the plans, the pedestrian connectivity was not real clean and it was kind of circuitous through the site. So in the process of relaying out the site plan, vehicular circulation, pedestrian circulation, we came up with a strong pedestrian spine that connects to the Ice House and the Makerspace and the apartment buildings. And we thought, again, if we could reuse some of this metal that's going to be reclaimed from the site and create this pergola with a bioswale next to that, we thought that would be a really nice way to visually link the two properties and create a conveyance utilizing material from the site. This is some of the green infrastructure, again, referring back to your ordinance. I will point out, your ordinance cited the Green Streets that SEMCOG did. We actually have one of our projects published in there, so we're real familiar with a lot of the stormwater incentives and doing these kinds of things, low-impact development, best management practices. But what we're proposing right now is two rain gardens, a bioswale, that'll be adjacent to the pedestrian connection. And then some other little things, we're going to do some, not related to stormwater so much, but we're going to do a solar panel that will act as a venue for artists or farmer's market or something like that when it's not being used for parking. And then the last thing we're doing along the railroad tracks, I hearken back to, I lived in Europe for a couple of years, and all my travels on the train going through Italy, you'd see these fields of sunflowers. We thought, what if we did a sunflower planting along the railroad track as a pollinator, another sustainability thing? Again, not necessarily stormwater, but just good environmental stewardship. This is the solar pavilion on the south side of the, of the Ice House. Again, that can serve multiple functions for vendors and for cars when there's not an event going on. And the power for that will be used for the tively lights, some of the parking lot lights, and any other things once we do, you know, the analysis of the actual electricity we can capture from these solar panels. This Makerspace is in addition to the apartments that wasn't on the previous plans. I think that was something requested by the planning commission. It's about 2,500 square feet. And again, as Tim and your planner pointed out, the residential apartments are proposed as 100 units at this time. And really high-quality, rich materials. Jason, the architect, can speak to this, but brick and metal and, you know, no, I think these are all very sustainable, nice materials that are, fit the character of the overall district and, and quality of the development we're, we're shooting for. These are just some overview renderings, kind of showing the, the property in its totality with the mural on the side and the conveyance of the pergola going down the middle. I think a little different than the renderings, we're picturing a little more massive than what we're showing in the renderings, but that's something that will, will work out in the future. This is just a plan view, again, showing the better organization and pedestrian connectivity from Woodward Heights to the Makerspace, to the apartments, and through the woo-nurf. Again, another overview. And just highlighting, again, the adaptive reuse of the Ice House. See the sunflowers in the foreground? I have photos of those along the railroad track. And that's sort of it. Again, really trying to create sustainable contractual place-making that relates back to your master plan goals, relates to some of the things we saw through the community, the murals that were seen in the industrial district, trying to bring some of those in in a different context. And I think that's it for now, unless you want to close it out, Tim.
So you can tell Tad really geeks out on this. You know, we're, we're, development team, we're, we're happy to answer questions. I know we've, we've certainly had discourse with you over the past year and a half or so. There are a number of people here that might want to speak if you'd like to, to hear from them, just really in support of, of what we're trying to, to do here. So I, I request if you could open that up. But again, our development team is, is here to answer any questions and, and we're excited to, to move forward. We'd like to have a, a recommendation tonight. I know there's some concern regarding the conditional rezoning potential that literally came up today. We didn't have time to obviously navigate. We are 100% willing to, to, you know, agree to develop exactly what we're, we're showing here. We didn't know that would be an issue, but again, we're, we're, we're here. We're, we're wanting to build the project, we're wanting to move forward, and we're here to answer any questions. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Tim. Right. At this point, I will open the public hearing for consideration of the rezoning, planned unit development, and site plan review applications for 700 to 800 Woodward Heights, the Edge mixed-use development at 7:10 PM. We can take comments on any and all of those together. It really is kind of a packet that hangs together. So don't feel that you need to restrict yourself to site plan or the rezoning. It can all come together. So at this time, anyone who is here to speak at the public hearing is welcome to come on up to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. You've got three minutes. Please direct your comments to the planning commission. I see people I know in the audience. Welcome.
I'm David Leonard. I have 601 Woodward Heights, which is on the west side of the railroad tracks. It's four acres vacant property. We're looking to see what happens here. I also have the office building at 701 Woodward Heights, which is right across from the Ice House. And I'm very interested, especially, I've been looking at the Ice House and at all that property back there that doesn't really look that good. And I think what they have to offer here is going to spruce up the neighborhood and really have some impression on me what I want to do with 601 Woodward Heights.
Well, thanks, Mr. Leonard. Welcome.
Thank you. Michael Daley, 2859 Horton. I refer to it as the Bermuda Horton Triangle. The blue house there to the south. I notice it. I've been slowly working on it, side by side. And I must say, I'm also a contractor and I'm impressed with the city of Ferndale, how I compare to other cities that I work in. Excuse me. It's a good city to work with. And I'm very impressed with the, the plans here. I've lived here for a number of years, about six years. I used to live on the west side. I moved over here.
Highbofield Street.
And I like my property. It's unique. I like where I'm at. And it, it has been kind of a standstill property, nothing going on. So it's very exciting to see this get going. And I have full confidence in, in the planning in the city of Ferndale that this is going to move forward. That's basically it. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mike. Good to see you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Paul Leonard. I own the property at 620 Woods Heights, which is actually the white-scale building that you see opposite of the tracks, just west of the tracks. We've been there, I've operated my business for 30 years out of this building, and I've looked across that tracks at nothing except for the Ice House. I think this project is something that the city could really grab a hold of. I would appreciate your consideration of it. I would like to see something other than nothing for the last 30 years. So this looks really nice. I compliment Dennis and his group, and I would, again, appreciate your vote for moving this forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Leonard. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Hand, president and CEO of Ross Controls. We're in the 950 Woodward Heights address. So our employees actually park right now in this lighted area between the two Ice, the Ice House building and the former Midwest Warrior Building, I think. So all I can say is, wow, this is an impressive plan and something that we, when we moved in, we long envisioned something like this and fully support the initiative. I think they've gone above and beyond in terms of meeting the standard of multi-use and really taking into account a lot of the different variables that I think the city of Ferndale would be proud of. And as a neighbor to the property, we fully support this project. We also submitted a formal letter, and I don't know if, yeah, okay. So you probably have a little bit more detail from our comments in that letter, too.
Thanks, Mr. Hand. Welcome.
Hi. My name's Aleah Webb, and I live at 3104 Minerva. I'm the owner of Drifter Coffee, the coffee shop that's right there. And I wanted to address a little bit about our space in front of the coffee shop and how we use it. I know that there was concern that people are pulling through the driveway, and that's absolutely not true. We, we use it as basically a front lawn. We do yoga, we do music, we do festivals with artist pop-ups. Sometimes we will have a food truck pull in there, just like they suggested, but that's, you know, that's only when we choose to. So I really like what they've decided to do with this space. I think it's going to really benefit us. I'm sick of looking at the buildings around, our driveway's falling apart, our customers have to go through a creepy alley to park, the neighbors have nothing to do. There's literally nothing to do but get a coffee and sit around. So I think it's a really great idea, so thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Leonard.
Hey, good evening. Matthew Roman. I own 1915 East Nine Mile. Just want to say I'm very impressed with these plans and the vision that Dennis and the group has provided. You know, I've been following this building for several years, and I'm really excited to see it activated in the community. I'd also like to follow up on that gentleman's sentiments over there about Ferndale. As a young developer myself, I always appreciate how, how forward-thinking this city is and willing to work with people. So really like this project, and I hope it comes to fruition. Thank you.
Joel Sullivan, 607 West Woodland, residence for 20 years, and then 910 East Strayton for my company, Paradigm Plumbing. I love what, what Dennis is proposing. I grew up in Ferndale. I'm a lifer. This little area of Ferndale has kind of been tucked away, and I think that it's a great thing that we're highlighting it. Ferndale's been built on diversity, and I think that's what Dennis is trying to do. You know, I have neighbors either side of me photographers. The new space at 915 East Strayton, we're part of that project as well, which is adding more diversity to our little neighborhood. Urban rest, it, it's, it's slowly becoming its own thing, and I think Dennis's project is just adding to that and highlighting it. So definitely in favor.
Hi. My name is John Rowe. Excuse me. I, I own 2350 Burdette. I run my photography business out of that. I have a photography studio there. I've personally been inside the Ice House. It is an awesome building that deserves to be renovated. And I think Dennis and his group have come up with a really creative use of that space and the space around it. Totally in favor of this happening in our neighborhood, our industrial neighborhood over there. I think it'd be a great addition to our space and would love to see this happen. Thank you.
Kyle, you've got some additional public comments?
Yeah. Good evening, commissioners. I do have several emails that came in today of people who wanted to make comment but were unable to. So if you'd like, I can read them.
That'd be great. Thank you.
From Matt Oseki, I'm writing to provide my support for the reference project. I'm a commercial real estate broker who's been active in the Ferndale area for over 20 years.
rates that have allowed us to be successful. When issues have come up, he has been responsive and he has helped tenants during periods of financial difficulty. I think his ongoing development in this quadrant of Ferndale is a net positive for the area. He's a hands-on developer who cares about the historic nature of the buildings he owns and the community they serve. I'm writing to express my support for the proposed development project, and I'm excited about the potential benefits it will bring to our community. The plan looks great and will clean up a site that has been neglected for quite some time. Most importantly, the unique Ice House building will find a new use. It's such a strange and cool building to see it renovated and occupied. It will be huge. It will be a significant landmark for the area. I encourage the city council to approve the rezoning of the site from industrial to PUD to move this project forward. Thank you for your consideration. We have Ingmar Korsagi, president of Marlowe B D Supply. I'm writing you to send my vote of confidence and support for the proposed project at the southeast corner of the rail crossing at Woodward Heights here in Ferndale. We have been at 2660 Burdette since 1994 and marvelled at the transformation of the area the past decades into such a wonderful part of the city. That being said, the proposed development would be such a major enhancement, and I will be traveling next week, so cannot attend the meeting to voice my support for the project. We've been so happy with the addition of Drifter Coffee. I'm addicted. I think the other additions would be amazing for the local businesses and, more importantly, for the Ferndale community. Please let me know if there's anything else I can do for you or add to make this become a reality. This is John Falcon from Ross Controls. I'm writing in regards to the exciting rehabilitation project planned south of Woodward Heights behind Drifter Coffee. I represent Ross Controls, 950 Woodward Heights, as its senior vice president and COO. Ross Controls is a 101-years-old international manufacturing company with founding roots in the Motor City. During the pandemic, we moved our corporate headquarters from Troy to our current location in Ferndale, immediately adjacent to Urban Rest Brewery. As an employer of choice, we were seeking a walkable and comfortable environment for our employees, and were immediately attracted to the initial vision of the Edge. Now in 2023, we eagerly await the development for our employees, customers, and visiting suppliers. The Edge project will provide a much-needed upgrade to the abandoned Midwest Wire, scheduled for demolition, and Ice House Building scheduled for rehab. Both are vacant and eyesore, and a topic of consistent questions from our employees who park their cars near the buildings for daily work. Our employees eagerly await to see construction begin, as the entire Edge project will clean up the site that has been neglected for many decades. The improvements, including the public amenities and thoughtful pedestrian walkway system, are a great addition to the neighborhood and one of the reasons we left our corporate space in Troy for our current location. On behalf of Ross Controls, its employees and regularly visiting suppliers and customers, we overwhelmingly support the project and are excited to see this come to fruition. The project supports the character that makes Ferndale so great, and once completed, will be the talk of the town. Please feel free to reach out to me directly if there are questions or follow-up. We're excited for construction to begin. This is from Michelle Foster of 535 Flowerdale Street. First of all, thank you to the project team for their commitment to quality work and for bringing the project forward, and to the commission for their commitment to making Ferndale a great place by volunteering their time. While I appreciate the efforts to develop a mixed-use project, bring more housing to Ferndale, and to rehabilitate the Ice House, I do not believe that a rezoning to MXD2 is warranted, as I've stated at the previous meetings. Rezonings are supposed to be consistent, quote, "with the goals policies in future land use map," city of Ferndale master plan, including any sub-area or corridor studies, end quote. We recently adopted an updated master plan that has had to cite future land use plan as industrial, which it is currently zoned. The master plan does designate the site in the redevelopment strategies section indicating that the Edge, a mixed-use development, aims to provide amenities and residence without losing industrial primacy. I believe that as there is no industrial use proposed in the project, that industrial primacy is lost, and that is not consistent with the master plan, which states, quote, "the future land use of this area is predominantly industrial," end quote. The master plan intended for this site to be solely residential and/or commercial. Future land use map would not have designated it industrial. This site is only one of nine privately-held sites. The 10th is held by the railroad in our industrial districts, that's M1 and M2, that are over five acres. It is a unique and rare site in our industrial district that should remain industrial. This is from Zach Tepinski from Urban Rest. I'm writing in support of the proposed plans for the Edge concept in Woodward Heights and the Drifter Coffee shop directly to the west of our building at 2615 Walcott. I'm the owner-operator of Urban Rest Brewing Company and have been in the neighborhood seven years. We also have a downtown taproom facility. We believe in the power of this neighborhood in bringing new developments to the area to improve the district immensely. We love the idea of having a walkabout district and improved spaces around our facility. This is from Carrie Sullivan at 607 West Woodland. I'm unable to attend the council meeting tonight. Wanted to show my support for the proposal for the Ice House and new apartments at Woodward Heights and the railroad tracks. The project is very well thought out, will provide housing for workers in the surrounding area. This area has been neglected for years, and with approval of their plan, they'll create new public amenities and a new pedestrian walkway. The design of the buildings look amazing. It will be a huge improvement to the neighborhood. Thank you for your time. This is from Kathy Koch from K-Tech Systems. I would ask that you consider Dennis Griffin's plan of the apartments and the repurpose of the Ice House. I moved my company back to Ferndale in 2017 to manufacture wire harnesses and temperature sensors. We love the area and are growing our business. We are bringing talent in from our Washington location and would love to see more housing for our employees. We are also in need of closer eating places, as some of our employees do not drive or unlimited time. Dennis was very instrumental in keeping us in Ferndale to COVID and helped our business drive by helping introduce other businesses and networking banks with us. I also live in Pleasant Ridge, and we all talk about how we need a walking place to get sandwiches or another choice. I thank you for this consideration for Dennis's plan. That's all I have. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for the public hearing this evening? If not, we will close the public hearing at 7:27 PM. And I will bring it back to, I think, well, I guess I'll ask a question of our city staff. Do you want me to move forward with the commission to ask questions of the applicant on the proposed motions, or do you have an update for us?
No, I think today in discussion, we had some discussion related to a zoning versus a conditional rezoning. I think the city attorney can weigh in on the difference and what is the request before you. And then I think you can express concerns about ensuring that the commercial goes through. And that would probably be another city attorney question related to the development agreement, PUD agreement.
Okay, well, we'll start. I'll give a quick update then to the commission. So this was a project that I stepped back from on my leg, so I'm back in after, you know, we talked, we talked with the city attorney about conflicts and, you know, came to a comfort level of me participating in this. So I got an update yesterday. When I was chair, I always had pre-meetings with our city staff to make sure I had everything in order. So appreciate our city staff for having that sort of traditional pre-meeting yesterday. And we walked through three motions that are in front of us. We have a rezoning, a PUD, and a site plan. It's appropriate that all of these things come together at the same time. We are the approving body on the site plan. We're a recommending body to the city council on the PUD and the rezoning. Heard the conversation yesterday, and again, this didn't come from me before because I wasn't asked at the last meeting, was the conversation about whether there should be a straight rezoning or a conditional rezoning. So my experience in the past is that the planning commission has an expectation, this is kind of a question for the commission, has an expectation that if a PUD doesn't go forward, or even a special land use often, when that is tied to a rezoning, that we look at that as a conditional rezoning, so that the underlying zoning district would revert back to what it is if the very specific project that we're approving doesn't move forward. So in this case, what we have in front of us is just a straight rezoning. So if the, any part really, this is, you know, they're combining three parcels into the big parcel, so really if any part of this didn't move forward, MX2 zoning would stay put, even if the attached PUD and site plan didn't go forward. So that was sort of the question of, oh, well, how can we update this? Can we add another condition? Can we change this to conditional before it goes to city council? This is when we called Dan. Because now we're getting into process and legal questions because rezonings require public hearings and appropriate notice and our public processes. So with that background, so I guess first question to the planning commission was I, was like maybe just kind of a poll, was I correct in assuming that we would want a conditional rezoning on a project like this? I would, but I don't know how others.
I mean, through the chair, if I may. I mean, I think given the public feedback about the project and a lot of people responding to very specific details about this project, I don't know if people have the same reaction if this project doesn't come through and then something totally different comes out, in which they would have the legal right to do so if it was totally rezoned. So I think that if this project is what's speaking to a lot of the community, a conditional rezoning makes sense to ensure that we're getting what we're talking about today.
Oh, I actually was looking at it differently than that. I think that the comments from the public have been largely focused on the potential for residential and mixed-use development on this site. And so I'm less concerned about the zoning being tied to this project because it sounds like from the community, whether it's this project or the next project, that this is the type of project they would like to see on the site. So for me, I'm less concerned about it being conditional, the rezoning being tied to this particular project, but that's, I may be in the minority here.
That's all right. That's helpful. I just want to ask before we kind of dive into legal stuff. Mr. President?
My thoughts that it would be conditional.
Yes. Okay. Chair President?
I share the sentiment that I think that based on comments, being as MXD, it kind of fills a gap from the train tracks to Drifter to Urban Rest. And I know that these are all uses that are secondary, the retail is secondary to the larger use, but it does create a whole connection from the neighborhood to that retail front to other areas of the city, and I'm not as concerned.
Chair President?
I would also think conditional for kind of combination of reasons stated, and especially in light of Chair Foster's email also, that we're looking at this specifically. And if there were, for whatever reason, this project were not to go through, and then there were an industrial use to come through, that would maybe more align with like that specific part of the master plan, it would be nice to have had it as conditional.
House member?
Well, I sometimes need things to be put in very simple terms. So my understanding is that a rezoning, we would rezone the property, and anything could be done with that property based on the new zoning.
Yes.
And the conditional rezoning means that they can only do this project based on our change to the rezoning. Okay. Thank you.
Let me just put, if I could, put a little clarity to that. It would be conditioned on whatever conditions the applicant offered to the city, and likely, for example, a condition could be that it was tied to the proposed project. But it could be other conditions, and then this body could recommend that, with that condition, to the council. So the assumption is that it would be tied to that, but it would be the applicant's discretion to make a proposal with respect to conditions.
Okay. And they haven't made those conditions to us yet? That's what they're working with the city on?
If I could.
Please, yeah, you were in the meeting.
There has been discussions, and I think there, I think it would be accurate to say that there is certainly great willingness from the applicant, and the applicants here can speak to that issue, great willingness to present an application for conditional rezoning with the exact condition that is being proposed, but it has not been submitted in writing as required under the statute with that condition articulated. And maybe we could just, for purposes of the record, get that confirmation from the applicant.
Thanks, Dan.
Hello, Ian. Yeah, so again, this came up today. It wasn't, nothing nefarious. We're not looking to ignore the PUD in the future. We've done, I don't know, 10 PUDs in the last four years. In fact, we did two PUDs here in city of Ferndale, and nobody said, you need a conditional. So I've never had to do a conditional with a PUD. So for us, it's kind of confusing. We've spent a lot of time. We've spent.
It's confusing to me.
Right. Yes, we are working toward whatever language is necessary to propose a conditional. Again, we don't, we wouldn't want to table it otherwise, but yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So to finish my inquiry, so if we decide as a body that we want to go toward the conditional rezoning, we will have to meet again to review that.
That was the direction from our city attorney.
Again, that contemplates what you've just heard, is that there would be an application with conditions submitted, you know, very likely, very quickly.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan. Yes.
Exactly. I mean, we would predicate it on the PUD, as we're showing. We're 100% willing to. I guess if that is the case, we'd still like to have your feedback tonight on, you know, everything presented and make sure that, you know, everybody that spoke in support could have, you know, your thoughts as well. So we put a lot of time and effort in, so I just wanted to convey that.
Yep.
So based on this, I would support a conditional.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's my, my understanding in all of these conversations has always been that, you know, the intent is to deliver the project as designed. Knowing the number and types of uses that are allowed in the mixed-use district, you know, if the Ice House came down and a new development went up that has none of this character, that doesn't bring, you know, because now it's permitted in the MX2, it doesn't bring the community engagement that this does, you know, that would, I think, feel like a bait and switch to the neighborhood. If I were a neighbor in this neighborhood, that's how I would feel. So that was, that was my main concern when we talked about rezonings. You know, it's a little bit different. Some of the other projects that Robertson Brothers has worked on were in R1s or R1s that move to R2s, you know, so different types of more compatible zoning districts. So MX2 and M1 do have a lot of overlap in their uses, but there are some very important differences when it comes to project citing in particular, which is why this is a PUD, right? Like this doesn't comply with the MX project citing. It can't because of these easements and things that they've talked about, right? So what you would get if this site were cleared and redeveloped would be very different than what we're looking at. So that's, I guess in my plainest language, the reason that the consideration of a conditional rezoning was important to me. Anyone else want to offer other thoughts on a rezoning? I mean, I can, I can ask for a vote tonight on the rezoning as presented. There is, you would have the ability to, if it didn't pass, you would have the ability to come back, you know, address the comments that are made and then come back. We made sure to look at that process, what happens if this doesn't pass. So I guess the commission can decide if a rezoning request doesn't pass, you can't bring the same, we can't double jeopardy it, right? You can't bring the same request back. Dan's going to kick me under the table for a year. But if you address the objections that were made in that rezoning request. Like, this doesn't comply with the MX project siting, it can't because of these easements and things that they've talked about, right? So, what you would get if the site were cleared and redeveloped would be very different than what we're looking at. So, that's, I guess in my plainest language, the reason that the consideration of a conditional rezoning was important to me. Anyone else want to offer other thoughts on a rezoning? I mean, I can, I can ask for a vote tonight on the rezoning as presented. There is, you would have the ability to, if it didn't pass, you would have the ability to come back, you know, address the comments that are made and then come back. We looked, we made sure to look at that process, what happens if this doesn't pass. So, I guess the Commission can decide, if a rezoning request doesn't pass, you can't bring the same, we can't double jeopardy it, right? You can't bring the same request back, Dan's going to kick me under the table, for a year, but if you address the objections that were made in that rezoning request, then you can bring it back, right? So, if we say, we're looking for a conditional rezoning that ties your site plan and your PUD to your conditional rezoning, and the applicant comes back, stop me if I'm going in the wrong direction, and says, okay, sorry, that went down, here's our update, that's permitted under our ordinance, or if the applicant said, "We'd rather you not take action on that tonight, and we'd rather bring the, bring in, and notice the conditional rezoning instead," that's also allowed under our ordinance. So, just looking for a little direction on which action we should take.
I would also add...
Neither action would like stop the project.
I would also say that if the Planning Commission recommends an out, it'll go to City Council, the rezoning, where they...
Oh, even if we, even if we don't recommend it goes to City Council?
Yeah, it's still a recommendation.
It's a recommendation to decline, thank you.
So, they can make an argument to council, and council may not agree and think it could be just a rezoning.
Yeah, I see, yeah. I see Darian from Robertson Brothers behind you. Please state your name for the record.
Darian Newbecker Robertson, I...
Thank you.
We are okay tabling, we just really want to get your feedback, so I don't want to force a vote, I don't want anybody feeling comfortable. We just want to get a sense, you know, if we hit the mark, and any other questions or specifics on things we should do. That's really where we're at.
To the, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dan.
So, it just seems like it may be a good point to inquire, provide comments to the applicant.
Yeah, I was actually going to ask Commissioners Brison and Haskins in particular, are we going to create an issue, would you support a conditional rezoning if it came back, or would you prefer to vote on the straight rezoning this evening? That's all right? What I don't want to do is set something up for another problem in the future, so thank you.
No, I'm not, I'm not against a conditional rezoning.
Okay. Interested.
But I'm, I think you have your majority.
Someone asked the city attorney, in that case, would you recommend that we table this to a specific future meeting date, or would you prefer to vote action?
I...
Because to vote to decline will confuse the City Council, I'd just rather not do it.
I think you can't be able to indefinitely until there's additional materials provided by the applicant.
I would make a motion to do it, the city attorney.
But before you do that, you might want to provide the comment, I think the last item...
Oh, thank you. I guess my question then to the applicant is, do you feel that you've had the direction that you need from us? On this, we're going to talk about the PUD and the site plan too, but on the rezoning, do you feel that you've got the direction from us on what would need to come back as a condition?
Yes, my, I think we have it clear, yes.
Okay.
I would provide feedback before you...
Did I not provide feedback? You want it on the record?
No, under present.
Oh, yeah. No, we're going to go next to the PUD and the site plan, yes. Yep. Okay, and then we'll come back to table rezoning, is what you're suggesting. Okay, let us move on then, to have the Commission provide feedback on the PUD and/or site plan motions. I had a couple of notes and questions on the site plans, just small stuff, again, just because I was not at the last meeting, so I've got a few small clarifying questions. These do really hang together, and there are some deviations in the PUD that are related to the site plan, so I was thinking we'd kind of take them together. What are the Commission's thoughts on what's been presented this evening? Does this address comments and concerns that came up in the past? Maybe we can start with Dustin, just because I was on the tour with you, I'm going to pick on you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because that, they talked, for example, about that separation from Woodward Heights parking and some of the things that came up on the tour.
Yeah, so the separation, you know, until tonight, which it still doesn't show up on the plan, and, you know, I know that you can make that promise, just put it on the plans, that way I have the assurance that what I see there is there, because there's a couple of other little typos on the plan that I was very confused on, I don't know if you were flipping the script on us last minute or what, so just kind of cross your teeth, dot your i's, make sure everything is exactly how we want it to see. But I was very surprised and happy to see that the conversation that we had about the parking barrier was thought about and followed through on, because, again, that's a deviation from our zoning, you know, having a side parking lot is not allowed without, you know, a variance. Other projects in the city, we've treated them the exact same way and said, hey, there has to be a way of buffering it from the sidewalk. And I think that the way you approached it was done in a very creative way, in a very creative spirit that matches the rest of the project. So, I was very happy to see that, and that definitely makes me support a project like this, a lot more seeing the details and the thought and feedback on there, so.
Thank you. In general, if we were moving forward with the PUD and site plan, would you have any concerns this evening?
Probably my only major concerns, and again, it's a beauty in the details, is I was very confused about the, there was one rendering that lists the electric charging parking spots along Woodward Heights and says vendor pop-up. And then, now we talked about the solar pavilion, and that's a vendor pop-up. So, where is it? Make sure it's on the plan so it's not causing that confusion, because, you know, I don't want to go charge my electric vehicle one day and see someone selling pottery in my electric vehicle charging spot, you know? So, I would like details there. There was also the discussion of the commercial component on the end cap of the residential. You know, we were talking about that this was a maker's mark. On another rendering, it says community space, is that community for the apartment people? Is that community for the public? Is that community to whoever pays the highest bill for it? So, those kind of details being worked out, because if that ends up just becoming an amenity space for the apartments, we're back at square one where we have a commercial property and a residential property, not a mixed-use necessarily. So, it's those details that I would like to see worked out, but compared to what came to us originally, there's definitely been a lot more thought, there's definitely been a lot more understanding of the way it flows through it, and if the details were paid attention to, I would be in support of this project.
Thank you, and you actually had two of the details I was going to ask, so thank you.
Commissioner Haskins?
Some questions. The Lunar, is the Lunar wide enough for two-way traffic?
Wunurf?
What is it called?
The W.
Lunar?
Wunurf.
Oh, I thought you were saying Lunar, like the moon.
I think it's a duck.
How's it spelled?
The W with an F on the end.
W is a V?
The Dutch word.
I haven't heard of it, a V, it's a wunurf, it's like, it is fun to say, I mean, you can just keep saying it.
I, I, I was hearing Lunar.
We knew events, we got it.
Yeah, it, it's, it's one way. It's one way, and we're reorienting the parking area there to be at an angle parking, so yes, it's not...
For entrance only.
Yeah, it's not wide enough to really functionally have two-way traffic.
Is there concern making it just the one way into the site with egress? If you're having big events and you have a lot of people all at once wanting to leave?
It's technically no.
Yeah, I think the way we look at it is you have two other, not that those are our main entrances, but you have two other entrances, exits, that could be used in the event of any, any kind of, I don't want to say emergency, but overflow. And of course, we have the main entrance, which would allow quite, you can see the flow would allow quite a bit of traffic, so we don't have concern with that, but I, you know, it's something we could look at.
In all honesty, I only raised it because some people may raise it. My concern would be if you had everything leading out onto Woodward Heights, and you have a lot of traffic building up on Woodward Heights.
The main, I think just the main...
Yeah, it's just the one.
Two-way.
And it would, you know, a main event, it would really just be one-way traffic at any given time, so maybe we could reperce that or something like that, so those are...
You have two connections.
Yeah, not mentioned.
So, I noticed three refuse recycle bins on the property. The one that I had concern about is the one next to the solar pavilion vendor space. I think I would just be concerned whoever uses that space be right next to a big garbage unit, and I'm wondering if maybe the more logical space would be across on the island.
On the what?
On the island that is directly south of it.
Is that a landscaped island?
It is a landscaped island.
I guess I would look to the property manager to make sure they're maintaining their dock.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't know if it's, you know, but I just, I wanted to bring that up in case, I don't know if anybody else noticed it, but if I was a vendor and I wouldn't want to have my vendor space right next to the big garbage bin.
Julia?
Not a critical, it's not like I wouldn't support the project if it remained there.
Can I respond to that? Because I think that's a valid question. We actually, we had that flipped the other way, and it was, you know, horrible, because that's what you see when you're coming in, so we decided to flip it that way, which I think makes a lot more sense. My understanding, and Dennis can certainly speak to it more, is, you know, it's already kind of far for Drifter, so it's for Drifter and some of those other uses there, so it's just kind of bringing that out farther than, and if you do put it in that landscaped island, I'm thinking would kind of bring the topic back with that's what you're seeing when you drive in through the Lunar. That was the rationale, it's not, there's no perfect way to really deal with it.
I don't think there's a win-win situation, I think. One or the other, it's going to be, but agree, you know, you can't put it any further out because then you're having everybody walk a quarter mile to get to the garbage.
Ask a quick garbage question, does that include composting for Drifter? Do you guys do your own composting, or are they...
We're part of the city.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Matt, you're here?
I'm there, so.
All right. The last item that I have would be concerning the railroad crossing periods, and I know that we had this discussion with several of you, there are times where those train tracks are locked for 45 minutes, and those gatebells are just ding and ding and ding and ding. You may want to consider spending an afternoon from like 2:00 to 6:00, and realize how many times...
Sure, Dennis has had it.
You'd at least three trains.
Yeah, and it's, it can be annoying, so just be prepared for your residents that are going to be there, that it's going to be annoying.
Through the Chair, actually, that's a no-horned area now.
It is a no-horned, but the gates make the noise.
Yeah.
And that's it. I think this is a fantastic project. I really love what you, you know, the changes, you listened to us, you considered what we had to say, and you implemented those ideas. This property has been a blighted property for decades, even when it was used, it looked like it was abandoned property, so I'm really, really thrilled with the direction that it's going.
House member?
Through the Chair.
Really quick, one other small detail on the site plan that I think, that I just realized when we were talking about the wunurf, I don't know if that's pronounced, it should have probably a one-way only sign on the site plan to indicate that, because until you pull in there, you don't realize it's one-way until you see the angle parking, so that should be indicated on the site plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to Commissioner Haskins.
So, I appreciate the preservation of the Ice House building, and I, I agree that the existing businesses in that area of the city are really driving the most appropriate use for this site. Commissioner Foster's comments around the future land use plan, and the leverage and the value that a five-acre site can offer a city from an economic development standpoint is, I acknowledge that, but I think, based on what I'm seeing, the recommendation from our economic development staff is to proceed with the PUD and the rezoning, and so unless we're, you know, actively seeking a business and employer that's going to be able to leverage that space, I think that a mixed-use development would be the next best thing to continue the trends of investment that we're already seeing in that area. With that said, so I guess I have a question. So, the location of the multifamily and how that was, where that was located on the site is largely driven by the easements? And was any additional density considered on the site?
I think a lot of it is driven by parking, and just kind of the layout of the site, and, you know, we kind of seek a happy balance, certainly don't want to overpark, but don't want to underpark, and I think that this is probably the most ideal, obviously we spent a lot of time coming up with that conclusion.
Yeah. Parking, man, parking, parking. For me, the piece I struggle with is, you know, five acres in a city like Ferndale... know, five acres in a city like Ferndale is hard to come by. And we have a beautiful historic rehab that certainly reflects the feedback that was provided by planning in a multifamily building. And I think that, you know, I think we potentially lose, leave some community benefit on the table in exchange for being able to appropriately park the site. And that's just, that's, you know, the brunt we bear, being a vehically oriented community, I guess. I still see this as two developments that are connected and very well, thoughtfully connected with the green space and the programming and that's being proposed. I mean, you've certainly heard the feedback and integrated it into the design. But I think, given the challenges with the easement and where the multifamily building needs to be located, given those easements, it's, you know, we're really looking at two developments that are thoughtfully connected through public space. So those are my thoughts.
Does that mean that you wouldn't feel that a comprehensive PUD is appropriate for the site?
I don't know as that I am there yet, but I, those are just my thoughts. That's why I wanted to wait until the end. I'm sorry.
It is a very challenging site, so.
Definitely.
Spent a lot of time trying to figure out the best orientation. Obviously, with your, your feedback as well, I think we've made a lot of improvements on that.
Mr. Sar.
Yes, thank you. Let me know if you can't hear me. My ears are plugged right now. It could be loud. I could be whispering. Great support for the Edge being on the front of Woodward Heights, and a lot of great discussion. I do appreciate that we've picked up on the details and the improvements made. I also see this as two developments, and very much engaged in redevelopment, place-making, all of that. So we've got this really exciting element with a front door, which is very appropriate. My sticking point is the relationship of the residential to the manufacturing. So I'm, I'm, it's not a beautiful manufacturing area. It's not like one large industry, you know, well-contained building. There's a lot of rusty parts, bits and pieces, you know, mechanical units on roof, trucking routes. So it's kind of a complicated area adjacent to the east. So, like I said, my sticking point is, is the relationship between the residential and the manufacturing. And again, in my mind, kind of the residential is buried back from a very public right-of-way, where there's a lot of people traveling and amenities and so on. I think you've improved the connection between where it is on the site and giving a more direct route instead of just weaving them through a parking lot. I don't believe that's a strong enough community connection. It is a path. I think it would still kind of drive people and just by benefit of where it's located, residential on the southern part of the site, to using the couple of more industrial side streets. So it would be really hard to cut that connection. I know you won't be having, likely not be having or promoting manufacturing trucks and so on to cut through the site, but it does kind of push the neighborhood to, hey, this is the easy way out, or I'll just walk that way. So there's real no buffer. I get that this is an interesting area, and, you know, people will walk through there. And, you know, I've walked and rode through the manufacturing area. Not very pedestrian-friendly, but, you know, it's not like packed with trucks all the time. So I balance this as to, you know, if we're putting manufacturing next to existing residential, what would we look for in that relationship? If we're trying to put residential near to manufacturing, is there a buffer? What are the screening? And when I see this well-developed plan, because it is very thoughtful, a lot of things touched, I don't see any indication of what it's next to, what you're really screening from, and what the impact from that could be over. And because it's a lot of small businesses, they could produce different things at different times. And I don't think I have a good sense of their solvents coming out, or their noises, is their equipment running? So I've walked the area a number of times over the years. And so I feel I'm somewhat familiar with it. I don't know all the businesses in there. But that really gives me the biggest concern is, would this be better as a commercial area? I mean, it's a phenomenal reuse of the building up front and supporting drifter and businesses that are there, and it would attract people. But then, you know, what if the rest of it were a commercial component that would be more successful, because it would probably be more acceptable next to manufacturing like that?
Yeah.
Can I respond? Because I think those were really good comments.
Yep, go for it.
So I, and I certainly understand. I think, I think I understand what your comments are, and I appreciate them. You know, we're looking to invest a lot of money into the site. So we've taken a lot of thought on, okay, is this, is this something that we want to invest our money in? Are we worried about, you know, the future residents of the area? You know, we've spent a lot of time, and we're very comfortable with that. We've done a lot of research on proximity, you know, these types of communities or these types of projects next to, you know, close to some of these industrial submarkets and railroads. We're comfortable with it from that respect to invest our money. So I think that that says something. The other, the other thing I do want to say is, they are, since they are rentals, they would have, you know, if they move in and they just can't stand it, you know, it's not like they're buying a townhome or something that's right adjacent to it. So, you know, those two kind of, I think, I think that will get to the point where we're not having a situation where people just, you know, can't stand where they're at, and they're not investing, say, it's not a condo, if you will. They would have that choice to, if they want to move there or not, or live there or not. So we're comfortable with that decision. And, you know, I understand, I appreciate the comments about the screening. We have added some screening to that area. Maybe we can look at more. I think that that's something we can certainly look at. We'll talk to Ted about that. But those are, those are kind of the thoughts that I had when you were, when you were saying that.
Go back to the slide. I apologize. Can we go back to the slide that shows the easements on the site?
Really on.
Sorry.
Went too far, sorry.
The big yellow.
Yeah.
It was, there it is. Yes.
Thank you. Do you have additional questions?
No.
Okay.
All right. So I've got a couple of small questions and direction. A couple, just quick notes for our city staff. We talked yesterday in our pre-meeting about parking setback deviations. There are a few that are noted in the PUD approval, but thinking about the parking setback deviation in terms of the front yard of the apartment building as opposed to just what's in front of the Ice House, it may be appropriate to add that as a deviation as well. We talked about it yesterday. I need to bring that up.
I'm sorry, which one?
So parking, so no parking in a front yard. So we've got a front yard setback parking deviation called out, I believe, in the PUD motion. I don't think it's in the site plan. I think it's in the PUD, about sort of the parking spaces that are forward of the Ice House. But it came up in our meeting yesterday.
You're talking about in the Sarah? Can you see?
Perhaps we should also consider everything forward of the Edge. So is this also a parking deviation? I think it needs to change or move. It should just be called out. But that's a front yard parking deviation, perhaps. So Commissioner Foster brought that up as a question yesterday. I want to make sure to put it back on the, on the table. It looks like Kyle's got it. A question for either the developer or the architect. Is there, and we talked about this at the site visit, is there a lighting plan for the north facade of the Ice House? I didn't see it on the photometric plan. And maybe it's just, you know, string lighting over the, over the front yard. But if there's permanent lighting that's planned for the north facade of the Ice House, I want to make sure that we show it.
Sure. Currently, there's nothing planned on the building itself. There's the string lighting along the Woonerf, and then there would be likely some landscape lighting to accent, you know, shrubbery plants.
Nothing high up on the Ice House?
No.
Okay, thank you. I had a similar question to Commissioner Hagors about the location of the solar pavilion. I think I see it as a little dashed box on one of the plans, but just making sure that the solar pavilion is clearly hold out on at least one of the drawing sets. I think I saw it on a landscape set. A question for Commissioner Eggers, do you want to see the bioswale engineering detail, or is that something that you're comfortable with staff approving?
That, it's fine if it's approved, as long as it's looked at.
Thank you. A question to, I want to come back to the composting question to Drifter Coffee, if you don't mind me asking you a question. Where your compost and other receptacles are currently located, do you think that they'll stay there, or are you thinking they're going to come back to the dumpster area?
Currently, our dumpster enclosure is not big enough to handle our dumpster recycling and our compost.
And the compost, yep.
Compost is just, it's a bin that's sitting behind our.
Okay.
Back door.
Got it. So then, to the developer in site plan, let's make sure there's room for how she uses the trash in the trash enclosure. Thank you. I noticed that when I was sorting at Drifter recently. We talked about a one-way sign at the entrance near Precision Spindle into the Woonerf. So, okay, those were my site plan notes that if we were making a motion, I would have added as findings and conditions on it. So my biggest point of conversation, now that I'm back at the table for this PUD, is that a PUD is planned and developed as a cohesive project. That is, again, I think hugely important for, to use that tool as a PUD, right? We have a lot of deviations from what's typically allowed here, because we're looking at this and presenting it to the community as a cohesive project. So if one part is developed and another part isn't, again, we're not delivering on what we've just, as a public body, communicated to the public, is coming. So when I look at the PUD agreement, the development agreement, and I see reference to phasing plans that then are presented, my first question is, where's the phasing plan? How is this being developed as a comprehensive project? And how do we make sure that it's developed comprehensively? So I know that there was discussion among the city attorney and the staff and the applicant, and I will look for that to be resolved when it comes back to us, so that we've got our PUD phasing spelled out. We know that we're developing this as a comprehensive project in order to qualify for the PUD.
So I think I would like the planning commission's direction on where we are with that. So.
How you resolve it is up to you, but that's.
Yeah, and I don't want to interpret what resolving was and then get back here at another meeting and then.
Oh, okay.
So I'd like to talk that out. And since we have the city attorney here, he can give advice for that. I think what Kate is mentioning is that the PUD gets approved, the rezoning PUD in the site plan. And we, while I consider cohesive, we have two different users and two different essentially developers. We have the apartment complex and then the commercial. You have two different improvements. You have the site plan improvements, but you also have the renovation of the Ice House. It appears to me by the comments received from the public and also planning commission, that the cohesive development and the end use of the building is what the planning commission is looking for. So if they get approvals for everything, and the residential moves forward, which I would say probably likely, but the Ice House renovation cannot move forward, you know, is the PC comfortable that everything else will be there, but the building not be renovated? So if the planning commission is comfortable with that, and the main concern is all the site improvements, then I think we can work with the applicant that the site improvements are really important, and a majority of them, a vast majority of them, will be installed with the first CO of whatever building. But if it's the both, I won't say users, we're not particularly users, but the renovation, that's important of the Ice House, then we have a chicken and egg. Which one goes first? How do they go first? So I would be curious, what is the planning, how would the planning commission feel if the residential builds, all the site improvements done, but the renovation of the Ice House was some period away that we couldn't enforce? And if that is acceptable, great. If it's not acceptable, then I would look to the city attorney on how, ideas on structuring, if we can get ideas. But I think it would be important for our discussion with the applicant later to know where you stand on that.
Understanding that the council approves the PUD agreement, but we would be making a recommendation. I, again, don't want to put something forward that they think they're getting some, one thing and they might get another, right? I want to put as many protections in place as possible, my trust but verify hat on. So I don't know, city attorney, if you want to.
Well.
Mechanism, I'm not trying to prescribe a mechanism, just outcome, I guess.
Of the exterior site improvements.
I want it all done.
And infrastructure improvements, the exterior that are set forth in the plans that have been submitted, those are appropriate to be incorporated into the PUD agreement.
Yeah. Well, and the exterior plans, for example, the amount of parking, are based on the proposed uses for both the new and the renovated construction. So are you saying that we wouldn't incorporate the renovations with you?
I don't know if there's a, perhaps we can talk to the applicant. There's not a specific plan for the interior of the Ice House, is there?
Well, we've been told a number of things. And we've put together parking counts based on different types of banquet and commercial uses.
Yeah, there's no specific site plan. I'm seeing if someone's standing.
We don't normally see a site plan for.
There is no specific site, I'm sorry, there's no specific plan for the interior, but I think we're glossing over that with the pictures of people out there and lights and activity. But you're right, there is no official proposal.
It's not part of the review. We're talking about the exterior infrastructure and site plan. Those are appropriate to be incorporated into the PUD agreement and a commitment from the applicant that those will be undertaken. As far as staging, that also could be incorporated into such an agreement.
Dennis Griffin, member of the development team. So specifically, everything that you see on the site is intended and will be delivered at once. So the Ice House itself, I think the, those of you that were there a couple of weeks ago, we had to demolish the terrible portions of the Ice House. So all the site improvements will be delivered. Drifter is staying with us. We have a food hall operator. We have an event center operator. We have a commercial use, and those are all in the specific parking calculations. There are nuanced changes of what it's going to look like inside. Our methodology always is that our clients personalize their space inside. We're 100% occupied in the rest of our buildings. And we have, you know, eager users today, but things do change. And we all, you know, we read, hear the news and read the news today. But in terms of anything being delivered, there is cohesiveness across the site. All the utilities are connected, all the stormwater is connected. So in a worst-case scenario, everything is soft and beautiful, and there just, there may not be people in the Ice House. And frankly, in a doomsday situation, there may not be people in the apartments. So in terms of delivering a development agreement that says before any CEO, oh, the site has to be completed, for us, it's just, it's not esoteric. It's just logical, because it's one development with our contractors to go from one end to the other, or however the construction staging is to be built. I don't know how we would craft, besides just looking at the things we've done past and introducing to you, people that would be occupying the space. I can't force somebody to stick to a contract to occupy the space. I just, I don't know how we would do that. So it's a kind of trust, but trust, but verify, I guess.
Trust, but trust.
But in terms of. But in terms of that site plan, and I don't know who's going to be living in the individual apartments. We have a very good idea, more of a concrete idea, who's going to be in the ice house than we are going to be in the apartments, as we stand here today.
Got it. Thank you. So I guess now the commission sees where this whole conversation came from yesterday. You know, if we have projects that are coming at different times, let's see the phasing plan, let's see what types of, you know, plans and any sort of assurances that we can reasonably get about things being completed as they've been designed, right? So we've designed something for banquet and commercial uses. If ice house becomes industrial, we've now overparked. If nothing happens for years, we now have a C of parking that's not occupied, right? So I don't have a crystal ball, but we've already overparked.
We've already
We've already overparked by at least 12 cases. But, so I wanted to see how the commission feels about this kind of larger conversation.
With the parking, though, I actually, with the public comments, makes me think that it's not overparked, only because there was quite a few businesses I mentioned
That share parking.
Their employees parking there.
Yeah.
So I don't actually think it is overparked. I think if anything, it's almost building into the parking demand that's already there. And I know in other projects around this district, we've had like parking agreements and whatnot. This doesn't necessarily have a formal parking agreement, but if we were to build only just enough parking for this project, then the question comes in, where do all your employees and go and park? And then now are we causing almost an underparking of this district, and now they're going into the residential area to park? And then now do we have an impact in the neighborhood joining? So I'm, I actually feel less concerned about the amount of parking after all those conversations, because it's clearly already being utilized in some ways.
Do you feel about a mixed-use redevelopment that we're not sure will be as it's
Well, and that's definitely where my concern is.
Okay.
Is, yeah, I understand. I mean, like, I mean, really, the best-case scenario could be that the ice house just becomes industrial, because then the parking goes away. But it could end up being something that is strictly a one, at one time of the day, is that being used, and then now you have a parking issue only because everyone's coming at the same time, and we don't really know how we'd estimate that.
I mean, every development is speculating on how they're going to tend their property until they're built out, right? I think it's, for me, the phasing is the spot demo, tuck pointing, roof, utilities, right? Like, my concern around the phasing would be, we're going to do the first phase and then not do a second or third. I don't know how it's being proposed to be phased, right? Not a, are we tending it the way that we had proposed back in 2023, right? Assuming like a two-year construction cycle. So, I mean, based on the city attorney's comments about, you know, what is being approved needs to happen, and the timing and the phasing that's being proposed, but as far as how it's ultimately tenanted, that's a gamble in every development. I think we're getting a bit too micro on that point.
So the applicant confirmed it's a single phase. And you're right, this wouldn't come up in a vertical, vertical mixed use, right? Because you build it at one time, we don't question it. If the first floor retail doesn't rent, they will eventually, they'll lower the rents. This one is harder in a horizontal mixed use with kind of different entities. But if the PC is comfortable with, in the future, that the improvements would include all the site plan improvements, everything around on non-building land, then you have set it up for success. And then where it goes from there is obviously up to
I don't want there to be a situation where the apartments are built, the site improvements have been made, and the ice house has not been rehabbed. What I'm hearing from the applicant that it's a single phase, I don't know is that that's going to be the case.
It's intended to be a single phase, but I don't think anything guarantees
Sure, sure.
the ice house part.
So the difference here is you have an existing building. So when we talk about phasing, typically, we're talking about the next phase where there's additional buildings. The building's here. So it's one single phase in that everything you see on that right there is going to be built from, before we would be able to move into, anybody into the apartment. So when we say single phase, certainly that's that. I think Dennis did a fantastic job explaining the intricacies of leasing and tenant improvements and all of that. So, you know, we're doing our best up here. You know, by putting every, every tree, every, you know, every rain garden, every, we're committing to doing every single thing that you see on here on one single phase.
So for clarification, you said that you will completely renovate the ice house and all the accompanying things at the front of the site prior to leasing a single apartment in the edge apartments in the south of the site. Is that what you just said, for clarification? Because that would completely solve, I think, our concern that it wouldn't end up being this mixed use if it, if they got built at different times.
Yeah, I believe that's self-caring, because those items we presented are on the site plan. And that site plan and its sheets will be attached to the PUD agreement. They must be delivered before a COO is issued. That would go into the departments within the city.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that then solves at least my concern. I don't know
Yeah, yeah. So the, so you may not have a tenant for the ice house, but in essence, it's white box, ready to go for whoever moves into it, is kind of, I think, what we're asking. Because I think the last thing we want to do is have, you know, the structure still there, but really, nothing done on the inside, and it's just sitting still as an empty structure.
Yeah, and I can, I can help explain, I believe, how the building will be advanced, those certain infrastructure items.
Okay.
Everything's going to be repowered. So that has to happen as part of the site components. All of our leads for water and sanitary and fire suppression are in the building. And so with all those investments, I mean, again, it's trust, but trust, verify. We want tenants in there as quickly as possible. I mean, it's, we want the right tenants, most importantly, and we believe we have those now. And I think, hopefully, I know you, you're all very good listeners, and our business approach is to support our clients early, you know. So if it's a low time, you know, we're taking as much of that on our shoulders as we can, so our small businesses can get in there and flourish over time. Every one of them has, you know, because of our approach business-wise, has been able to invest more in their business. So I'm real confident in our, in our tenant group, you know, they're warriors. I think they're going to be amazing, but things happen. But you can rest assured through the plans and the technicalities on the plans that everything on the exterior and infrastructure
Thank you. Got it? That's enough.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I will just say, like, I think where my reservation, I think some of our other reservations come from is the fact that they are two separate structures. Like, when you normally do a mixed use and you're doing a historic preservation effort or a remodel, you build it into the project, and so you wouldn't be able to have the other structure without that historic component fixed up and incorporated. So I think that's probably where some of the concern is coming from, at least on my end. But I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth.
Other questions or comments on?
I just want to confirm where we are with the expectation. So at the next submittal, based on what the applicant said and confirmed, planning commission heard this, is that all the site improvements you see from this bird-eye view will be done. The sunflowers and the trees and the front yard and the patios and this covered area, everything. I think the applicant is stating that with that, the water lines and sewer lines, water lines and sewer lines and electrical will be here, but there may be no work done to the inside. Maybe, maybe there is, maybe it's drywalled and floors in and ready to go, maybe not. But everything you see in this bird's eye view will be completed. Is that correct? Did they interpret that correctly? Worst case.
I would be looking for that to be included in the PUD agreement, exhibit whatever it was that was
But you think you'd be okay with, just to hear from the commission, that would, if it included all the bird's eye view improvements with the first CO on the property, whichever one it is, that would be acceptable?
That the ice house is brought up to utility code and ready to go. I mean, that's my understanding, is that there's going to be an infrastructure investment in that building that will make it renovatable and useful. Yes. That's what I see on these utility plans.
Yeah, if the city attorney is comfortable with that, it makes it easy, because they're actual improvements. And so if they need a CO prior to those, then they can escrow the money if there was, it was winter and you can't install a tree, we can figure that stuff out. But if the expectation is the bird's eye view, that we can deliver that in an agreement?
Interior renovations are outside of our purview. They, you know, we would never be looking at those details, but it's the, it's the comprehensive nature of the PUD that made me ask the question. So
Yeah, I mean, it's not atypical for a development to be delivered as like a cold gray box in a
Again, they're not going to invest in significant build-out, knowing who the tenant is. Ideally, they're walking in with an OI, but not always. It's really helpful, Brittany, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Speak now or from, hold your peace, or at least till next meeting. Okay, Roger, do you have what you need from us?
I think we have everything. I think Kyle and I have notes. We'll sum this up tomorrow and
Tim and Dennis, do you have what you need from us? I want to see if there's any, I mean, I wasn't in the conversations this afternoon, so I just want to make sure we've given the direction or specificity. I just want to see if there's any last questions.
No, I don't think so. I think we'll be looking for the applicant to provide the conditional rezoning letter. We'll work with them on that. We'll get it scheduled again. I think we have it.
Okay. Any final comments from the commission?
I just want to, I don't know how many of us have been here for previous conversations, but acknowledge the addition to the site plans that have been made in response to the planning commission's feedback, and it's certainly acknowledged.
Just one more, just for clarification.
Yes, please.
I know there were some comments about screening or, you know, and there was previously, and I didn't hear much of that today, about is this, does this meet the PUD standards and that sort of thing? I mean, is there anything that, those are some high-level issues that we would like, maybe just some clarification on?
Is any, are there any commissioners who don't feel that this meets the PUD standard? Want to give any feedback on that? Didn't hear it come up earlier. It wasn't at past meetings. I know you guys talked about it in depth. And went through his presentation of the 12 criteria. They've tried their best to meet them. We've talked about the connection of the two buildings as, you know, sort of the reason for the PUD and the See anyone saying that?
I think we have direction. We'll work with staff on these final comments.
Yeah, I just, the applicant invented places that they don't meet all of the requirements, so
I don't think you have to hit 100%, right?
Yeah, that would be my question, is like, what is the expectation? It's my understanding that
So at the last meeting, I think Commissioners R. went through each one.
Yeah.
Which was just much more direct for the applicant. That was different. I think the commission probably would feel that some have improved. So, you know, I think the applicant would love to go through them and to give feedback, so they know. But it's up to the commission on how many they meet. There's no prescriptive number in there, but it's collective and it's
Can we flip back to those slides and see if anyone had a question on any of them? Tim had them, or no?
Going backwards? Going forwards?
Here we go.
And I think, I think just the quick answer to this, I don't know if you're going to find a site that is going to hit all 12 of these, and that is certainly not the requirement. I think it's only one, if I'm not mistaken, but
I don't know that we specified a number, but
Okay.
Not, there is no expectation that it'd be all.
Okay. And certainly, we're hitting more than half of them, and I'd argue even the ones we're seeing. We're not, we hit to some degree, but yes, I, we went through these, and I'm happy to, if there's any questions on any of these, certainly.
Yeah. The transition areas from adjacent land uses, is that part of what you were talking about Commissioners R. with, with screening or?
That was part of it. Actually, may I through that, please? Okay, so out of the 12, when we went through them, it seemed that, I believe, six, if you go through these, look like you've given an explanation for how they would comply. I just want to raise the question about how did you exceed them, or did you? So a lot of these are descriptions about, you know, this works, but, so for example, I'm sorry, if you could go back.
Yep.
Number three, so sustainability. Adaptive reuse is huge, because you're not demoing, you're using existing construction, but there's a lot of new construction and so on. So yes, you're addressing storm drainage. There's some solar panel that you're tying in.
That is a lot of
So big picture, the ones that you're complying with, are you exceeding or showing additional?
Again, and I think the intent is to meet a lot of this, but I think we're exceeding it, to your point, with the rain gardens, with the bioswales, with the solar. These are all things that are kind of above and beyond, the EV chargers, including the barrier-free, you know. And then, and again, the new building, which, you know, will be brought up to code and above. So I don't know if I'm missing anything, but I think we wanted to hit some of those, those sustainability components a little bit more directly.
And from, from the feedback from the folks tonight, I would offer that number five is specifically an affirmative today, because the transition, we've done really what we can in terms of like property rights to make connections, but I'm, I'm hearing more, and it's embarrassing in a lot of ways, because there's things we want to do. But the transition is a visual one as well. And all of our neighbors say they love the fact that it's improved. So I, I would, I would offer the number five as a definitive hit as a, as a part of the PUD process for the transition, and the adjacent land uses as a visual. And I just learned that today. So everyone likes to see things that are a little bit more beautiful from, you know, their own place, their own home or place of work.
Thank you. Sorry, on that point, meeting code or doing things that are already prescribed by code are just expected. So when we're balancing, you know, are you meeting expectations and basic requirements? Is that the sole reason? I mean, and it's not just for this project. I think it's how we generally look at an application for a PUD. So just to comment on that.
Those are fair points. And I can't speak to the building, because obviously I didn't design it. An architect walked out. But, you know, really, I think the site design is where, where we were concentrating on some of those. We're trying to, certainly more improve than what you saw last time. So we thought we hit a lot of those things, and I'm actually proud about a lot of the site design, sustainability elements that we added to it. So that, that's where the nexus for that was.
Other?
Through the chair, could you advance the page? Thank you.
Chair, looking at number 10 now, I'm starting to wonder if that really is going above and beyond. I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know what the requirement for the mountain bike racks for that kind of a size project is. But from what, I mean, you know, yeah, the pedestrian flow, you have a good walkway from the front to the back. That's true. The biking infrastructure, actually, though, is kind of a half-thought in it. I mean, there is biking infrastructure along Woodward Heights. You're correct on that, but there actually is not really a clear idea, other than driving, riding your bike through a parking lot, on how to access the pedestrian, how to access the residential. So I don't really know if, from a PUD perspective, that's going above and beyond. Like, again, there's bike lanes and a Mogo station, but that's not what this project, that this project didn't bring that. That's existing infrastructure. So from the PUD perspective, I'm not sure if that really goes above and beyond. And yet, I don't know, the bike racks, I don't know if you could say, hey, they added five more bike racks. That's going above and beyond, but I don't know what the amount is for that size of a project.
So you wouldn't consider the mixed-use nature of the development as being pedestrian and transit-oriented? Because in my mind, I mean, yeah, the city made this big investment, as we've done in other corridors like Libernoy, that we are seeing redeveloped. other corridors like Liberino that we are seeing redevelop, right?
Yes, correct.
And 30 years ago, it was Nine Mile, where we made a huge infrastructure investment, and, you know, private investment followed, so we're now seeing that on other corridors. And I guess when I think about pedestrian and transit-oriented development, I'm thinking about the, the mix of uses at the site, which is, it's, it's different, hence the conversation about the rezoning, and kind of pushing the neighborhood forward toward more pedestrian and transit-oriented. I mean, Doug says there's people walking by our house for the first time.
Yeah, that's true, but I guess then what my argument...
I was thinking more macro.
I guess what my argument is, though, is that was the city's doing, that's not this project's doing. So we're giving them a PUD and saying, oh yeah, you met number 10 because now it's biking friendly.
Oh, so I looked at it the other way around.
Yeah, but it's like, you know, it's like, they're, they're coming because the city put that infrastructure in place, but they're not taking, like, we threw the football to you, but you're not taking the football and running with it, you're just like, oh hey, I caught it.
We're also adding, also adding residents to, to use your, your resources, so I, you know, I think we're, we're under, you know, obviously, we appreciate that those things are there, I, I understand that the city didn't...
Yeah, and maybe it's the explanation of why you're explaining number 10, but I mean, you, you talk about all this like bike infrastructure and stuff like that, but it's like, that's not what the project's doing. Actually, there's no bike, aside from a bike rack, there's no bike infrastructure on the site, so someone's riding their bike through a parking lot to get...
We are overparked for, for bikes. I think that's, that's a good overparking, so that's...
But yeah, I guess I was looking at it the other way around, in that this is a, this is a pedestrian and transit-oriented development in a neighborhood that historically has not been. So they are bringing appropriate uses to the site to take advantage of the infrastructure that's...
I understand.
Yeah, I was just...
Yeah, I got you.
Through the chair, and, and trying to avoid going through these and, and picking at them, but number 11, if, if it is a five-acre site that is all currently manufacturing, then they're not really disparate uses, we're actually changing the use from one basis, which is continuous with the adjacent land use, into different uses. So, in my mind, translating that to coordinated development of separate uses, it's, it's not really a correct, I mean, it doesn't read as true.
It's small parcels, isn't it?
Yeah. I mean, so you're bringing a couple of parcels together, but they don't, they're all zoned the same, they're, you're not like pulling parts that didn't work well together, they're the same under the thing.
So drifter's in there, and it's part of the overall, so that's kind of a different use, if you will, and we're trying to integrate that, integrate that in. So, I agree, I think that could be worded certainly better, but...
That's, that would be clear, I understand that part, but...
Yeah, so it is assembling small parcels and then contemplating the integration of Other feedback on this for the applicant, on any of these points, or if you feel that they're not meeting them or not meeting the burden of...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for asking that question. Darian?
I just wanted to take a few minutes, I want to thank you, I want to thank the staff. We've worked with her two years now, and it predated Roger, we worked with Jordan as well before. The one other thing I want to point out, we finished every project we've ever started at Robertson. Sometimes it takes longer, I mean, we finished every project that we started before the downturn, it took longer. So, we're excited to start this, we hope we can move forward, and if we are able to move forward, this project will get finished, and it'll get finished in the project, in the way that we envision it, and I think the way that, you know, we've heard your feedback, we've reacted, and hopefully, we delivered what you're looking for. So, thank you.
Thank you, and we will work to get you a series of motions that apply with the process that the commission has expressed that we'd like to see, but also would be clear to the city council moving forward as a comprehensive package. Any other questions or comments from the commission on this item this evening?
Only question that I have through the chair, so our next meeting is scheduled for the 5th. Are we anticipating that this would be brought back to us on the 5th, or was there an anticipation to bring it back sooner?
I'm not putting a date on X, S, go back through renoticing, so...
Yeah, I think the applicant has requested to table it, and so you'll maybe be making a motion to table, but then they'll submit the same exact stuff, but with a conditional rezoning. I think to make it on the 5th, we have to notice it today, so, right?
Well, it's the 15th, so that would be 20 days?
No, Kyle's done the date.
Good evening again, so, in terms of upcoming dates, you know, our next regularly scheduled meeting is the 5th. We do have to notice 15 days in advance. Typically, we do the Sunday paper before that. We are very close to the cutoff, so I just can't stand here and guarantee that we'll get the notice in the newspaper. I mean, frankly, we're past the newspaper cutoff, but sometimes they can cut us a break. So I just can't stand here and guarantee that we can notice in time for the 5th.
Yeah.
If not the 5th, then it likely would be the following meeting.
I just wanted to make sure that there were no unexpected expectations.
I mean, let me ask a question, because the city attorney is here, he'll tell me to stop. What are the minimum notice requirements? Does it need to be published in the paper of record if it's coming back around for another public hearing, or does it just need to be published upfront? Okay, thank you, never mind, let's stop. Okay, then, next question to our city attorney is, are we better served by a motion to table or taking no action? Different people have different opinions, tell me.
I, I don't think any action is necessary unless the applicant wants the table, and I think the indication is clear that there's going to be a additional submittal provided by the, by the applicant.
Typically, that's done, the advice to me is to take no action, but I just wanted to make sure that we are meeting the expectations of the applicant and the staff, so if you guys want to motion to table, just tell me what you want.
No, we can say in the minutes that the planning commission took no action on the application.
Okay. Because I don't have a date, and because I just went through this legal training with Oakland County, I'm going to not make a motion to table without a date. Okay. All right, then that concludes item number 5A. We will move on to number 6, any updates on administrative items from Roger or Kyle or Dan?
I think Kyle has something.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
And thank you to our applicant, sorry.
I may say something.
And thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for bringing our neighbors, it's good to see them. Thank you.
So, as you know, we are working towards our zoning ordinance, right? We do have a steering committee, Councilor Polica and Chair Foster are included on the committee, so that was posted back in February. We will be closing the bid process on March 28th and moving on from there. So we've had a live Q and A, we've had a question cutoff, and we have been, you know, spreading the word, it's been posted in APA National, as well as Michigan, MML, so we are looking forward to that, it's pretty exciting.
It's exciting. Any updates from commissioners this evening? Other administrative items, Roger?
No, I'll just piggyback on that. We, we have a steering committee, so you guys know, the DDA director, the chair of the planning commission, Councilor Polica, Claire Dion, help me out, Kyle.
Claire Dion. Sustainability?
Claire and, barely, and Cara, communications director. And so RFP is out, we have put it, I think, even in the like Pennsylvania planning, the Illinois is planning, we've put it all over. I think the last count we had was 23-ish, 24 downloads, so we're excited to move forward. And then I just want to thank Dan for coming out today. I know you guys like to see him, and if he'd like to come to every planning commission meeting from now on, he can, but thank you.
Politely looked away.
He's being quiet, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for all of your help today, Dan.
Glad to be here, and I look forward to seeing the next consideration by the commission on this matter.
Thank you. Anything from the commission before we go?
Through the chair, if this does come back and it ends up aiming for, what, April 19th, I think, is the third Wednesday of the month, I would ask to probably move the start time to 7:00, because I do also have another board meeting I have items on, and with the countless M dot projects that are going on right now, it is now a two-hour drive from Lansing, so...
Got it. Is there anyone who would have a problem with moving it to 7:00 for that meeting? I'm available on both, is there anyone who's not here on the 5th or the 19th?
The 19th, I am not here, the 5th, I am.
Thank you.
So keep that in mind if you want to have everyone's vote.
All right, with that, I will adj...